With these things, there are several whereas clauses. I think the best thing to do is for me just to get into it. Because I think rather than making a speech, it's more illustrative to go through the whereas is to explain why it is we're doing what we're doing. So, public trust and confidence in the ethical conduct of individuals elected, appointed, and employed to serve the county is of paramount importance. Section 810 of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter states the purpose of section 810 is to prevent elected county officials, officers, and employees from securing any financial benefits from their public positions other than compensation provided by law. Section 810B of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter generally prohibits county-elected officials, officers, and employees from receiving emoluments of any contract, job, work, or service for the county, or accept anything of value upon terms more favorable than those granted to the public generally from any person dealing with the county. And section 810B also generally prohibits county-elected officials, officers, or employees from soliciting or receiving anything of value for any act done in the course of public business, except in the county. Section 810E of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter provides that county council determines whether there's a conflict of interest. Section 810 of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter does not provide a definition for financial benefit. Section 17.06C of the Northampton County Administrative Code provides some definitions and standards applicable to the acceptance of gifts by county-elected officials, officers, and employees. There appears to be a need to further clarify the definitions and standards of conduct applicable to the acceptance of gifts by county-elected officials, officers, and employees. Executive Order 2023.04 of Governor Josh Shapiro of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania is found to be an appropriate model for the establishment of definitions and standards of conduct applicable to the acceptance of the gifts by county-elected officials, officers, and employees. Section 2027 of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter provides that county council shall have the power to amend the Administrative Code. Section 602A1 of the Northampton County Home Rule Charter provides that county council shall adopt an ordinance for any act which adopts or amends the Administrative Code. And then there's the, now therefore, by the Northampton County Council, the Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 17, Section 17.06C, shall be amended to read as indicated hereafter. Sections marked with bold underline have been added, and sections marked with strikeout have been deleted. Now, it's important to recognize at this point that we do have an absolute gift ban, except the exceptions to the gift ban are big enough to drive a truck through. So, we must close those loopholes. And under new section C, we have no county-elected official, officer, employee shall accept or solicit cash or cash equivalent, a gift, or other item of more than de minimis value: admission to a recreational event, a personal loan, or personal or professional service in connection with their employment from another person or entity whom the elected official, officer, employee knows; one, is seeking to obtain business or an outcome from or has financial relations with the county; two, conducts operations or activity that are regulated by the county; three, is engaged either as a principal or attorney in proceedings before the county or in court proceedings in which the county is an adverse party; or, four, has interests that may be substantially affected by the performance or nonperformance of the official duty of the county employee, appointee, or official. Five, limited exceptions. Now, the limited exceptions section is important because, under the Wolf administration, when a state official came to visit us, they couldn't even accept a cup of water. Such was the absolute nature of their gift ban. So, in order to make sure folks don't get caught up in that kind of situation, while we've closed our extraordinarily broad loopholes, there are exceptions, limited exceptions. Ordinary social hospitality may be accepted only when incidental to officially sanctioned county trainings, e.g., approved continuing ed and working lunches, or in connection with an official government function or other event in which the employee, appointee, or official is representing the county in an official capacity. I think that may cover like C cap, for example, right? Gifts from friends, parents, spouse, child, or other close relative may be accepted when the circumstances make it clear that the motivation for the action is a family or personal relationship. Receipt of a plaque, certificate, or other similar item of de minimis value may be accepted for recognition of the employee's appointees or officials' professional work or personal community service. Any ceremonial gift or award which has insignificant value. Tangible items, benefits, or discounts which are unsolicited may be accepted when the same or similar benefit or discount is available to members of the general public. Food or refreshment of de minimis value on infrequent occasions in the ordinary course of a luncheon, or dinner meeting, or other meetings may be accepted, and recreation, entertainment, food, or refreshments of de minimis value in furtherance of a charitable event may be accepted. Unsolicited advertising, promotional, or informational materials such as pens, pencils, notepads, mugs, t-shirts, calendars, and other such items of de minimis intrinsic value may be accepted. Bonafide reimbursement for actual expenses for travel and such other necessary substance may be received if it's compatible with other restrictions set forth in this ordinance, Home Rule Charter, Administrative Code, Employee Manual, and if no other county payment or reimbursement is made. However, a county-elected official, officer, or employee may not be reimbursed, and payment may not be made on his or her behalf for excessive personal living expenses, gifts, entertainment, or other personal benefits, nor may a county-elected official, officer, or employee be reimbursed by a person other than the county for travel and official business under county orders. Participation in the affairs or acceptance of an award for meritorious public contribution or achievement from charitable, religious, professional, social, fraternal, or nonprofit educational, recreational, public service, or civic organization is permitted. A voluntary gift of de minimis value or donation in a de minimis amount on a special occasion such as a marriage, illness, or retirement may be accepted. The limited exceptions contained in subparagraph five above are not applicable to any gifts, cash, cash equivalent, discounts, loans, services, or any other items or other benefits of any kind or any other value received from a lobbyist, lobbying firm, or principal as those terms are defined by Act 134 of 2006. The limited exceptions contained in subparagraph five, subject to subparagraphs one through four, are determined not to violate the general prohibition, are determined not to violate...
I am on the phone. This is Tara Zarinsky. I am listening to the call, thank you.
It's okay, I'm almost done. This policy does, where were we? This policy does not prohibit attendance at or acceptance of ordinary social hospitality in accordance with the guidelines set forth in this policy, at functions, events, or fundraisers scheduled on the county-elected officials, officers, or employees' personal time unrelated to the individual's county employment. Nothing in this policy shall override a county-elected official's, officers, or employee's duty to comply with and timely file federal, state, and/or local financial disclosure forms. The following word and terms when used in this article have the following, this is the, this really is the important part, because people need guidance. We need guidance, employees need guidance, they need to understand what it is we're talking about. Cash equivalent, an asset that is readily convertible to cash, for example, credit, debit cards, prepaid gift card for any commercial establishment, foreign currency, certified check, cashier's check, money order, or similar negotiable instrument. How is de minimis fined? We find that phrase throughout this proposed amendment to the Administrative Code. De minimis is defined by this amendment as any property or service, the value of which is so small as to make accounting for it unreasonable or administratively impracticable after taking into account the frequency with which similar property or services are provided by the source, or a meal which is equal to or less in value than that of ordinary social hospitality. Gift is defined as any gratuity, entertainment, loans, or any other thing of monetary value, including in-kind gifts during the course of their employment. Ordinary social hospitality, the value of food or refreshment not to exceed the General Services Administration, GSA, rate for the applicable time period and location. So, there's a lot of guidance in the amendment to the ordinance so that we can, our employees can, look to these definitions and understand when they could potentially run afoul of the gift ban. Person, any individual, partnership, corporation, nonprofit organization, political subdivision, or other entity, but does not include the county, state, agencies, or agencies of the United States Government. Six, personal loan, any temporary financial assistance requiring repayment to an individual organization with or without interest, personal or professional service, an intangible service of economic value or benefit performed by a person or business. Recreational event, a professional or semi-professional sports event, theater event, musical concert, or similar event, including transportation there to and therefrom. Tangible item, a material item or item of more than nominal or de minimis intrinsic value. I do not suggest by offering this amendment that anyone has violated our charter or Administrative Code, to my knowledge to this day. However, having taken a look at the loopholes, and I think when you take a look at the loopholes within the current gift ban, you will agree that me calling on you to take this up at your next meeting and begin the process of amending the ordinance is justified. Thank you very much, I appreciate the time.
Thank you, is there any other courtesy of the floor? Okay, moving on to business, review of the county executive's appointments. First, the Lehigh-Northampton Transportation Authority. Excuse me. Matthew L. Rosa, Correa Road, Easton, Pennsylvania. Mr. Rosa is being considered for a five-year term to begin April 21, 2023, and end March 2, 2028. Attached is his bio. Motion to move forward if you agree, or any questions or discussion?
Yeah, a motion to move forward.
Thank you. Next, we have a recommendation for appointment to the Personnel Commission. U. Harold Levy, Hilltop Circle, Bethlehem, PA. Mr. Levy is considered for a two-year term to begin April 21, 2023, and end December 31, 2025. His visa is attached also.
Move forward.
Thank you. And that's it for that. Next, we have personnel requests for the Department of Administration, weights and measures.
Good afternoon. We've been very fortunate that the, the people working in weights and measures have had a significant amount of experience. Unfortunately, John Keppel has moved on, he's retired at the young age of 75. And leaving in his wake was Clint, who had this position before. He has been promoted to the Director of Weights and Measures, and as such, the position that he held before is no longer necessary, so we would like to return back to having two deputies so that we can move forward in hiring someone else.
I don't think I have this. Sorry, I thought I lost my mind, but apparently I didn't. Although some may suspect, but it was not true. So, we don't have this in front of us? So, what's? So, then I could say, what the heck are you talking about? And I would be fully within rights. Okay, thank you.
I would just say I was talking about number three.
Yeah. I'm looking at it, go, what does that have to do with what's in front of me? So, while we're waiting, you want to articulate what we're going to see?
It's simply, it's simply removing, the incumbent of that position, having been promoted, had a wide range, varied arrangement of talents and certifications, and he had helped train new people coming in. Now that he's the, the chief sealer, his position is not as necessary. He has nearly 10 years of experience, and the other deputies would obviously have significantly less, so they would not be sealer and trainers as the position exists today. So, this would be just returning back to having two deputies rather than having a deputy and a training, training officer.
So, an elimination and a creation.
Yeah, we had changes about two years ago.
And do I need the, do we need the other part for tomorrow night? The HR part, or no, it doesn't matter? You'll put it in for tonight?
Yeah, I was about to say, you should, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so, any questions now that we, now that everybody else knows what I'm thinking?
Charles, could, could he come to the meeting? Who, the new, the deputy that's taking over? So, we could just get to see him and say hi.
I will see what we can do.
Do we need to motion to move this forward?
Although, to that extent, just so you know, he's vacated this position, so, the position that we're talking about tonight, he's vacated.
He still works here, though?
Yes.
He's taking on the new one. If we approve it, he's taking on the new one.
No, no, he's already, he's already the sealer. He's been promoted, he's vacated this position. This position, having been vacated, we're now turning it back into a deputy position so that we can fill it at the appropriate rate.
Motion to move it forward.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience, Mr. Dirt Jerk. Next, we have personnel request, Department of Court Administration. I believe that this was removed at the request of Mr. Green, who is here, who could speak to that.
Was removed. I have the AOPC looking at some legal statute on my behalf, and I will be resubmitting this in May.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I adjourn the personnel meeting, unless there's any other comments or questions? Yes, sir?
The end of the pandemic, are we still on track to no longer request people's vaccination status? And then masking at Gracemont, I've read that other healthcare organizations are no longer masking or making it optional.
Yes, and was there a question, a second question?
Will we continue a masking requirement at Gracemont, or will we make it optional as other healthcare organizations are starting to do?
It will be optional the same time the national emergency is over.
May 11?
Yes.
So, our staff is aware of that?
Yes, yeah.
Can I ask a clarifying question on top of that? So, obviously, with that being a healthcare facility, there's certain places where it will not be optional, correct? And will that be, obviously, if they're on an isolation unit or otherwise?
Well, so, we're not going to substitute, and we never have, our judgment for CMS guidelines and for clinical guidelines at Gracemont. So, Tower 10, for example, where folks who have COVID go to convalesce, there'll probably be N95s there, but we can confirm that with Dawn.
So, obviously, in cases where it's clinically appropriate, they will maintain maskatory, but elsewhere it would be?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
With that, I adjourn and defer to my colleague, Mr. Hefman.
All right, we'll call the, excuse me, Finance Committee meeting will commence immediately, which we are doing. And first, we'll start with courtesy of the floor. Anyone have anything for the Finance Committee, Mr. McClure?
I do, and this is much shorter than the last one. You received a letter from me that I sent to Mr. Pector. That letter was generated based on a phone call Mr. Pector made to me, where he said that he would like to have the opportunity to negotiate along the lines of the suggestion that I made in that correspondence to him, so that we could, together by agreement, codify the necessity to have manufacturing at the site. That's what I wanted to report. That's why you got that letter. Mr. Pector called me.
Any, as long as he's standing here, any questions along those lines? We can wait until tomorrow. All right, thank you. Okay, excuse me. All right, if there are any other courtesy of the floor. Seeing none, close that. And we'll go to a discussion regarding the PFAS litigation. You'll have to excuse me, I forgot my reading glasses, and even though these are prescription that are partially reading, I don't know who they were prescribed for, but not for me. So, anyway. I'm going to read part of this, I'm not going to get into some of the whereas, as you are all competent folks, you can read them. Whereas, Northampton County Administrative Code, Section 11.03, outside legal counsel provides in Section 1103, a quote, "The solicitor with the approval of the county executive and county council may retain outside legal counsel where necessary." And in Section 1103B, quote, "For the purposes of this section, outside legal counsel shall mean the use of any legal counsel, attorney, or firm of attorneys other than the county solicitor and assistant county solicitors, which may be used to defend and/or represent the county of Northampton, a county employee, or a county-elected official in litigation, and/or assist the solicitor's office with matters involving the county of Northampton." And the next whereas pretty much just gets more into that. And we'll go to the third one. Whereas, on April 10, 2023, county council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving a contract with Klein and Specter, PC, for outside legal counsel for environmental litigation. And whereas attached heretofore marked as Exhibit A and intended to become a part thereof is retention agreement by and between the county of Northampton and Klein and Specter, PC. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Northampton County Council pursuant to the Northampton County Administrative Code approves the retention agreement. You should all have Exhibit A. You can read, excuse me, I don't know if anyone, McClure, you, or anyone else wants to touch on this now at the committee meeting? It's your call, or just deal with it at the meeting, meeting.
Ms. Rudis is more closely involved with the issue than I am, and you'll get better answers from her tomorrow.
Sounds good. All right, Mr.?
Just note that on the second page, Specter is spelled incorrectly. Whereas, it should be T R, not O R.
When did you become an English teacher? All right, so, anyway.
Back in the old days.
I thought you were going to say Specter was, was spelled as like the evil specter. I'm not going to do, that, that gets close to lawyer jokes, and I'm not going there. So, anyway, all right, so, has that moved to be, anybody on finance move to?
I'll move it, but I have questions tomorrow.
Yeah, I understand. Okay. Next, we have review of Administrative Code, Article 13 with O'Brien LLC. And if I have the right one in front of me, let's see. Okay. Yeah, this is it. Whereas, Northampton County Administrative Code, Article 13, procurement and disposition of county property. Section 13.15, contracts and agreements, C2, requires approval of county council for, quote, "Any contract and costs are to be funded with monies outside of the county's general fund and those funded through bond indebtedness." Whereas, on April 11, 2023, the Northampton County Council received a request from the county executive for county council to adopt a resolution approving a contract in the amount of $199,1750 with Witt O'Brien's LLC for consulting services and hazard mitigation plan update for the county of Northampton and the county of Lehigh from August 6, 2022 until September 5, 2025. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council thus hereby concur with the recommendation of the county executive set forth in the attached documentation to approve a contract with Witt O'Brien LLC. You have your procurement notice attached, price $199,750, and the other pertinent information. So, any questions? Yes.
Mr. Weaver is here, and I'd ask if he could say a thing or two, just cursory reading of this, it seems somewhat regular. I'm shocked at the price to do this, what?
So, every five years are required by FEMA to do a hazard mitigation plan, and we always had done it as a by-county plan with Lehigh and Northampton County. The last previous update, it was Lehigh County to be the fiduciary. So, this year, we were the ones that applied for the federal grant that pays for $210,000, and then we put it out for RFP. And we've had four responses, we interviewed them, and between both the county's emergency management departments, we selected Witt O'Brien. And part of that is, is we wanted more than just an update, but to add a little bit more meat to that hazard mitigation plan for projects, for even the local municipalities to go after when those disaster funds are available.
Okay, so, could you give us some examples as to when that might come into play? The obvious one here?
When it comes into play, whenever there is a disaster, if we get a disaster declaration, they're required to put aside a percentage of the funds that come to Pennsylvania, and they get put into hazard mitigation projects. So, if you don't have that hazard mitigation project in your plan, you cannot get disaster funds to mitigate that problem, like repairing a culvert pipe that might be flooding, or raising a home, or putting in a bank restoration. And, I mean, there's all kinds of ideas that you can put in that plan, but they got to have skin in the game and show that they have a project and want to take care of it. So, when those funds come available, it makes them eligible. If it's not in that hazard mitigation plan, or it's not put in through the yearly updates, it is ineligible, and they move on to the next applicant that actually has it in their plan.
Okay, so, is there any place where you see ours currently lacking that?
We have, we have a good plan now, but it's required every year, every five years, you have to do the update. So, what we want to do is put in more, instead of generic, is maybe get a little more granular with shovel-ready projects, because it makes it move quicker through the PMA and FEMA process for approval when you get those grant funds.
Okay, now, yeah, now, each municipality has to do one of their own as well.
They're actually part of the county.
Okay, so, you'll be coordinating with all of the townships?
It will actually be with 62 municipalities, counting us in Lehigh. So, they'll coordinate, they'll have what we call a municipal annex, so they'll have the county plans, and then they'll have a little section that will cover Williams Township with their demographic, and have their action items that they want to do. So, it kind of gives them a little bit more skin in the game, they don't necessarily have to read through the whole county plan when it's time, they can go right to Williams Township and go, these are the things that we want to apply for.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
And, and I have Aaron Buchanan. She's from Witt O'Brien, so she drove here, just in case she had any questions or wanted to know a little bit about her company. And also in the back, I have Thomas Guth, who is our Hazard Mitigation and Recovery Manager, so he will be the lead on the project in helping update the plan.
Yes.
Well, since you took all this time, if you could maybe say a word or two about your company and how you will move this process forward, should we award you the your company and how you will move this process forward, should we award you the grant tomorrow?
Sure, thank you. Good afternoon. Yes, our, thank you. Our company is a full-service disaster response, recovery, preparedness, and mitigation firm, and we build resilience into all of our processes. So specifically for hazard mitigation, as Todd mentioned, we specialize in hazard mitigation planning, assessing community risk to natural and may-made hazards, and then identifying projects or solutions to mitigate or reduce those risks and build resiliency into the communities that we, that we help with through the planning process. So as part of the planning process, all the communities will have to be participants, and we will guide them through, through that process, collect data from them. We'll have several planning team meetings, and like, like Todd said, at the end of it, they'll have a, a mitigation plan, and then supplemental annexes for the various jurisdictions.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, thank you. I noticed you're from Houston, that's where the corporate office is from, am I correct?
I am not from Houston. I am from West Virginia, but our company is based out of Houston, and we have, we have planners all over the country, so we, you know, more regional to my area, so.
So you'll, the main office will be out of West Virginia, is that where?
The corporate office is in Houston. We, we, we've worked in a more remote environment these days, so.
So I guess if I can tail onto that, would there be someone relatively local? I know everything's more remote, but as a contact in, in the general area of Northampton County?
Yeah, and one of the reasons we, we selected Witt O'Brien was their willingness to come up and meet with the local officials, because we wanted, we didn't want everything just virtual, virtual. We wanted some face time with them coming up. So they'll plan time when they're coming up. I mean, they'll do it efficiently. If we have a meeting, then they'll decide what municipal municipalities are able to meet and work with them. But we found with pretty much even some companies that were in Pennsylvania, they wanted more remote work than actually coming up and, and meeting with those. And we find with our previous hazard mitigation plan, we got a better bang for our buck by face-to-face meetings and explaining and helping them do the worksheets.
Very good. Any questions for any of the individuals? Oh, Mr. Brown.
Todd, who did the last update? Which, which firm?
It was actually the Leah Valley Planning Commission.
Oh, they did, they were the ones that did the last?
Yes, they did.
Okay, thank you.
Question. How long is it going to take for her to meet with the municipalities and get the information she needs?
The process hopefully is, we'll actually have the plan to FEMA by October, because that's when ours expire, unless we have to file some extensions. Part of, they compressed our time only because of grant award time, so that kind of creates a compress. But we'll have stakeholder meetings, and those municipalities that don't participate will be reaching out to them one-on-one. Our emergency management office will help with facilitating that and say, come on in, and let's have some meeting. And some may want to do it over the phone and get it done with, so that's the timeframe we have to work with. There's other deliverables part of this, is our threat analysis and stuff, which can be delivered later, and also some of the DAM stuff is in there. But that's, the reason that timeframe is long is because that's the entire time for the grant period. But our goal is to have everything hopefully to FEMA in sometime in October.
So you're going to create some sort of binder for the entire county?
It is, it is a very large, it's probably like a 200-page plan. It's, it's huge. And that's why when we do the municipal annexes, when people look at the big binder, they'll go, where's Williams Township? Where's Easton? I'm going right there, I'm going to skip the county.
I just wanted to make sure we're clarification on that. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had one. Something that's been in the headlines a lot lately are rail.
Yes.
Freight rail, we have a significant amount of train, freight, rail. Is that up to date, and is that something that you're going to look at as part of this process?
That is part of one of the hazards we look to mitigate. But currently with rail actively, we have two training sessions scheduled with Norfolk Southern, where they'll actually come and do some responder training two days in June. And then we also have Findlay University that does free training through, through FEMA that funded, where they'll actually do rail incident response. And we have other various trainings that have to deal with pipeline, but those type of incidents and the scale and the type of training are interchangeable. But yeah, we've actually just looked at our, our current emergency operation plan, make sure that we have all the right contacts, because it is an all-hazard plan from hazardous material incidents, not necessarily with rail, but with tractor trailers, to, you know, facilities, to warehouse fires, to, to rail, so yes.
Thank you.
Todd, as long as you're here, I'm just curious, what you said, I, I gotta ask you, you use the planning commission? How much did they charge? And just out of curiosity, why didn't you use them this time?
They never responded to the RFP.
Oh, how much did they charge?
I'm not sure. I'd have to check with Leah County, because they were the fiduciary back then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we flop every five years of applying for the grant of which county's the fiduciary.
Didn't bother.
Yes. Nope.
Whatever. Okay, thank you. Nothing else, then?
May I be recognized?
Well, certainly.
I know council rightly expects the companies to be here when council is voting on large contracts for said vendors. Do you require Ms. Buchanan to be here tomorrow night, or may she?
How does the, all right, well, we have council members here. I, it doesn't matter to me, she answered.
By the way, she did not request that, that accommodation. I, I thought of it myself.
Does anyone have an objection to her not being here, Ms. Buchanan? Do you want her here?
I don't, but there's other council members who aren't here that we can't answer for, so.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Does Tara want her here?
I don't have an objection.
I would say no.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll have a contact number in case there are a question that must be answered, and we'll be able to get her on the phone, right? Okay, yeah.
Enjoy your trip back to West Virginia.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion to move this forward.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Ms. Vargo Hefner. That's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just had one other question. At the CCAP monthly meeting, they mentioned that there's a submission required for the ARP that's going to be due at the end of the month. Is, is that true? Will we have one, and can council get a copy if that's true?
Mr. Steve Barron is coming to answer that.
So the, I can tell you, I can preview it for you, because I just looked at it. It is due at the end of the month, it's due for the first quarter. So there was a year-end report put in. We did not spend any money in the first quarter yet of this year. Doesn't mean we have things going on. There are invoices that are coming in, we're building a daycare and things like that, so we have not expended any of those funds yet in the first quarter of this year. I imagine it'll be a pretty large report next quarter, but I have submitted them every quarter that they come in, they go through the, the portal. I can try to pull down the PDF once it's submitted at the end of the month, but sometimes it's not available or readily available right away until the federal government approves it. So once I'm able to pull the PDF, I will make sure I forward it to council, you can see it. Thank you.
Any other business for the Finance Committee meeting? If there is none, I'll take a motion to adjourn from a member. We are adjourned. Ms. Vargo Hefner made the motion.